I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, September 20, 2017, at 6:00 PM. And all commissioners are here and accounted for, with the exception of Commissioners Cecil and Cave, which are absent and excused. And, oh, and there's Commissioner Wickwire right there. So, we have five of us up here tonight. Welcome back. It seems like it's been forever since we met. There's no non-agenda public comments. There's nobody in the audience today. We have three sets of minutes to approve. And if you all have had a chance to review the minutes already, somebody wants to make a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from May 3, 2017, May 10, 2017, and May 17, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. New business this evening? Bruce, no new business. Okay, with that, we will continue the public hearing on the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Amendments requested by the Puget Sound Regional Council, otherwise known as PSRC. We're joined tonight by Bruce Blackburn, Senior Planner, and Tom Burdette, Community Development Director. And I'll hand it over to Bruce.
Good evening. I actually don't have a formal presentation, so I'll save some time on that. Essentially what this is, I'll just kind of remind the commission, of course, that this is part of the comments we received from Puget Sound Regional Council in 2015, after the city did its 2015 periodic update. They had a number of areas where they would like to have us change. And we've had a couple of meetings with the commission already on what some of those comments could be. We had a meeting during the break with Michael Hubner of PSRC and talked to him about it. And we've had a couple of emails exchanges since then. And in your packet, what you have is the result of those discussions we've had with them, as well as the previous discussions the commission had, i.e. on some of the changes we'd make within the conference of plan. One of the areas that we thought was kind of interesting was that a lot of the discussion points were on background data and some of the information regarding the conference of plan, not necessarily goals and policies themselves. However, having said that, there are some goals, I'm sorry, there are some policies within the Housing and Human Services element we would be proposing to add, as well as a new action within the Transportation element regarding the need for a multimodal concurrency program, basically regulation. And essentially what that would mean is essentially that, right now, the city has a concurrency provision for vehicle traffic, but we don't have one for pedestrians or bikes or some of those other types of things like transit as well, that would have some type of a concurrency. Basically, what you would do is you would have some type of a measurable outcome. And so, okay, well, development application when it comes in, you're not meeting the concurrency on pedestrian sidewalk or something like that, and you have to take care of that. That is a very complex item that our Transportation Group has identified. Look, that's going to take a lot of time and effort, and we are willing to have as an action, but it's not something that we're going to be able to do, like, right away, just because of the breadth of the information would have to be on that. Now, we sent out a packet last week, and Commissioner Zorn's identified a couple of errors in that packet that I wanted to basically bring to your attention. And what we've done is that we have sent out a new packet, both email-wise and support stuff on your DAS. And we highlighted in yellow some of the information that was missing. And one of the elements that I know in the land use element that was kind of missing was that, you know, we've been kind of working with Michael Hubner of PSRC about, okay, the language we had, and we were kind of focused on just those amendments. However, as I read through it again this afternoon, I said, you know, I think what the piece that's missing is the overall vision, i.e. the target, the capacity, and where we expect to be in 2035. And so, what you do is, in that packet, you're going to see a new table that I'm proposing that we insert. And I think that brings it all together in a way that, okay, now you can just go to this one table, and you can say, okay, here's what the City of Bothell's capacity is going to be, here's where our target is, here's where our surplus or deficit happens to be. So, we think that that will kind of address some of the concerns that PSRC had as well. So, essentially, the concept of tonight is that we'd like for the commission to take a look at this and to bless this as a potential plan amendment, as well as some draft findings. Again, this is more of a technical kind of an exercise, but again, we have to go through the planning commission on that. So, I think at that point, I'll stop, and I'll let the commission ask questions or debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. At this time, I guess I'll allow any commissioners to have any comments general with regards to kind of the shorter packet that we have in front of us. And we can just kind of do it free-form here for a bit.
Thanks, Bruce. Just a quick question. So, the changes to this attachment A that came from the one that we received are all highlighted in yellow?
It is in yellow, yes.
Okay.
I have a few questions off the top of my head. This is more information for me, probably, than, you know, edits that need to happen. Reconciliation process that was mentioned on page one of the attachment A. Can you tell me a little bit more about what that is? The context is, it should be noted that Snohomish County, countywide planning policies provide for a reconciliation process, and the event new plans or plan amendments do not accommodate that.
Yeah, essentially, essentially, what happens is that we have the Snohomish County Tomorrow Group, that if there's an issue in our plan, that, oh, wait, we can't meet our capacity, or we're having trouble meeting a target, we can actually go to that group and have the discussion as to how that's going to work. Part of what occurs there is that we also work on how the allocations for population and employment targets are set as well. So, that's kind of an allusion to that process.
And then, for the Snohomish County side, where Bothell is identified as a core city.
Yes.
What is our label for the King County?
Well, it's actually, PSRC has labeled this as a core city, so it basically applies to both sides.
So, we are core for both sides. Okay. And then, also on page two, let's see, one, two, three, four, five paragraphs down, the sentence says, my question is, losing the ability to appeal. The possible consequences should a jurisdiction not meet its assigned growth targets include loss of eligibility for various state funding sources and potential appeal to the Growth Management Hearing Boards. Does that mean you lose your ability to protest or appeal because you have not met all the growth targets here?
Yes. The idea behind that is that there are certain, let's say, duties of the city that we have to follow under the Growth Management Act. And if you fail in those duties, there are certain types of benefits you will no longer have the ability to do. A good example is appeal something to the Growth Management Hearing Board. That's a very extreme case.
Okay. Can I keep rolling with questions? What would happen if the City of Bothell says that number's too high?
Well, a couple of things. One is that there would be a long process in which there'd be a lot of discussion held on that. And essentially, the real hammer is the transportation funding withdrawal.
Gets impacted.
That's the real hammer.
So, we're kind of behind the eight ball to meet those numbers, if we want the transportation funding?
Well, yeah. And matter of fact, what'll occur is, as we go and make, basically, grant requests for transportation improvement projects, you know, instead of being up at the top of the list, you go right to the bottom.
Okay. Okay. So, then, can I keep going with my questions, or do you have a related question to that? Okay, sorry. Get it all out. I noticed that the two target areas for putting density is Canyon Park.
Yes.
And Country Village.
Within Snohomish County, yes.
Within Snohomish County, right. And there's a movement among, that people would really like to save Country Village. So, talking with people, if, you know, for some reason, they were to get funding and set aside, you know, do like some of the parks that have happened around here, able to purchase that and set it aside, now Bothell has to look for another area to put that density, right? So...
Conceivably correct, yes.
So, what would those be? What would be Plan B?
Well, what would be Plan B is, in our next periodic update, we'd have to investigate that, just as we did in the 2015 periodic update. And if, oh, well, all of a sudden, we now have a deficit again, and we'd have to plan how that deficit would be basically erased, or how we'd get back into a situation where we met our city's targets. So, there'd be another area within the city that would have to have some increased capacity for population.
So, cross that bridge when we get to it, if it happens. Don't, okay, so I have one more question, and then hopefully I'm done for the evening. Last night on City Council, there was, I think, Councilwoman Sandberg brought it up, maybe it was a different council member, that was talking about the issue of TDRs and taking, are wetlands being considered, you know, in transfer development rights? How are wetlands going to be protected? Because we need areas protected here within our city, as well as out in the rural areas, correct?
Oh, yes.
So, when you were making your estimates for buildable lands, I'm assuming that you pulled out all critical areas and wetlands when you were...
Absolutely.
Okay. That's my only question.
As well as, I'll give you the whole rundown. There's athlete right-of-way that's pulled out, public right-of-way.
Okay.
And there's a market factor that's applied, because we know that there's going to be a certain percentage of land that will never develop, particularly within the timeframe of our plan. So, those are all pulled out of the equation for the capacity number.
Okay. You guys are on top of things. Thanks.
Any other commissioners can jump in. I just had a question with regards to something that Commissioners Orange alluded to, that I just wanted clarification on. So, as Bothell being a core city, I know one of the benefits, at least historically in our literature, was that in 1995, I guess, the council that chose to apply to designate us, it sounded like we had some say in becoming a core city. Anyway, one of the benefits was to get transportation, was to, I'm sorry, receive expected priority in infrastructure spending, infrastructure. So, you know, Bruce, you know, basically, has, do you think, since that time, since we've been a core city, do you think that we do receive more priority? Did we receive priority, like, with regards to the Wayne and, I'm sorry, the Wayne curve and straightening it? And how has Bothell benefited as, with that designation getting prioritized with regards to dollars? I don't even know if that's something you can answer, but if it is, if something you kind of just didn't know.
Well, I can answer it partially. And you just identified some of the big projects we've had, the boulevard, the crossroads, the improvement to 522 to accommodate both bus rapid transit, as well as improve the Wayne curve from a safety standpoint. There's all kinds of those type of projects that have gone up there. I'll tell you one of Snohomish County, the, where they improved the intersection of 220th and 527. Those are all things that come into play that are really important. One of the things that'll be very interesting when we do, and I'm going to talk a little bit about this, but not in a lot of detail, because we can't yet, but that's part of the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center is really important, because there's going to be a lot of potential changes happen there transportation-wise. And so, those are all elements that we want to be able to take advantage of.
Okay. And Tom?
Let me add to that, yeah. With some of our recent discussions with the Puget Sound Regional Council, planning staff, relative to designation of Canyon Park, they commented to us that we have been very successful in receiving funding over the years for our projects in Bothell, and complimented us for that. So, I don't know whether it's because of that designation, or a combination of that designation and a concerted effort by our capital improvement projects team. My guess is it's probably both. You know, they know how to submit projects that score well. So, but their comment is, yes, we've done very well for the size of city that we have.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Bruce. Thanks, Tom. That's all I have for now. Does anybody else have any general comments?
I have some general comments. Are these findings meant to be final findings or draft findings?
Well, they were draft findings, and the idea is that, okay, the commission might make some changes to them during the course of the evening. And then, at the end of the evening, you say, you know, authorize the chart sign as amended tonight.
If you look at, on the very last page of the, well, actually, it's the specific plan, commission, planning commission findings on page four, numbers 17 and 18. On 17, is that just something we're waiting to fill in, based upon, just the sentence stops there before it gets into the while?
Oh. Yeah, my intention was to insert something from the PSRC staff there. I haven't received it yet, so, you know what? Let's just take it out, because since I haven't received it, I can't really...
Okay. And then, you may have just looked at the second sentence in 18. I think you can, there's kind of two clauses there, and I'm not sure if you started right sentence and then changed gears, because it...
Right. I did. Yeah, yeah. I actually was looking at it, saying, oh, shoot, that's something I better fix.
Okay. And then, just curious about Snohomish County, with Country Village and whether that's, you know, an area that gets saved. I don't know if people know that in the early '80s, the Pike Place Market was slated to be demolished and three large buildings and garage and wipe it out, because it was in disrepair, and it was seen as, you know, an area of blight, and citizens got involved and saved the Pike Place Market. And, you know, you couldn't imagine downtown Seattle now with Pike Place Market, all the vendors, the tourism. And, you know, Country Village is, you know, kind of, it's like the Pike Place Market of Bothell, and I'm just wondering if there's other areas. You know, for example, around, just north of where I live, is the Red Barn Special District. And when the Safeway project was built, if you read the regulations from Imagine Bothell, and that happened right when we were moving here in 2006, it was intended to be a mixed use with a lot of residential. And that's not how it got built. And there was actually, you know, two public hearings where the hearing examiner actually kind of, there was people in that, in the community that said, hey, this is not following the regs. And there were two public hearings, and then ultimately, on different grounds, that project, you know, went forward as is. And it's, you know, it's a very useful project for that area, but that's a large area where you could have had more density around that intersection versus getting further in just along that 527 corridor. And I'm just wondering from, you know, how many more larger areas like that are in major corridor areas that, besides Country Village, that could be, that we could look at from a zoning perspective to encourage more residential versus, you know, again, retail? I don't know if that's possible in this kind of growth, because that's effectively what we're doing now in Canyon Park, if I understand correctly, that we're encouraging greater density, higher buildings, so that we can make up some of this, you know, some of the deficit in Snohomish County.
Right. Boy, that's a long, we can go through a really huge amount of analysis on that. I think in general, and then Tom will kind of finish me off, because I think he's got probably something he wants to say as well, but the concept would be that, as far as Country Village, if citizen groups gets together and acquires it, and that all works for the plan, the plan would accommodate that. That's not an issue at all. The idea behind the mixed use and whether we require mixed use, interestingly enough, when the commission, two years ago, was working on an area up there by Nike Hill, the commission actually placed a recommendation that there be a mandatory mixed use. Mandatory, not just, you know, you could do this, or this, or this. It was mandatory, you had to have retail, it was mandatory, you had to have residential. And that's the kind of action that would occur, that we'd want to have within those kind of areas, i.e., you know, the Safeway slash kind of area, did not have that mandatory provision. And that's basically what we do want to add to those areas.
Oh, it's a great question. I love those questions, because it really gets to the heart of comprehensive planning. And I think the challenge for Bothell is, is that we really straddle these two counties. And there are not many cities that do that. I think there's only two or three, or three maybe, in the state that have that. More, five?
There's five, yes.
Okay. Well...
But nowhere near the extent that the City of Bothell does. They have little corners or something.
So, the challenge is, for Bothell, how quickly was the downtown going to take hold and develop? That's, you know, that's always a question. And it's been very successful, and that momentum is probably continuing, as far as we can tell. But you still have this, you know, you still have this Snohomish County, King County boundary. And, you know, if we can't change the population, we can't transfer the population, you know, to get to Jeanie's question, I mean, you're supposed to work this out with the counties, right? And say, well, if we can't take the population, for whatever the reason, and we're out of land, we're, you know, there's, we don't see the redevelopment potential, we don't have the infrastructure, whatever the reason, you go back to the county and negotiate with the other cities. So, for Bothell, what do you do? Do you negotiate with the state and say, you know, maybe it would be better to allocate 3,000 people more to King County than Snohomish County, and just to make it average out for Bothell? And that'll fit, that'll kind of fit the trajectory of our growth. I don't know that there's a process for that.
Yeah, and you know, you bring a good point up, because we, a number of years ago, made that really staunch appeal to, I believe it was the Puget Sound Regional Council, that, hey, look, you know, we do have a surplus in King County, and even though we have a deficit in Snohomish County, we still meet our overall growth target. And basically, the response was, great, but you have to meet your capacity and target numbers within the county that you're within. And they didn't really recognize that dual role that we have here. So, it's a really interesting question.
So, maybe that's a legislative kind of fix that needs to be reviewed and explored for Bothell. On the technical side of it, though, you know, we have, I think, you get to amend this every year, and you get to reevaluate your trans. You get to see where things are going. And with the geographic information system that the city has, we can identify where the new housing's going in. We can plot it on a map and bring it up and show you where that is. And we can add it up by county, easy enough. But then, it really is, well, if Country Village is preserved as a commercial area, well, we'll come back and reassess, where are some likely other targets, and bring that back to the Planning Commission and say, well, here's some options. Where do you think the additional density would likely be accepted? Here's where the infrastructure is, and here's what we think we can accommodate. We have to go through that process. We could face the same thing in Canyon Park. When the city determined to bring in density into Canyon Park, that was kind of with the understanding that eventually Canyon Park covenants would allow that density come in. Well, we don't know, that's still kind of an unknown at this point. We think we're going to get there through this planning effort, that we're, you know, we know that there's some strong support for transit-oriented development, similar to what is happening in the downtown and what's happened at the gateway. When we've talked to some of the business owners in Canyon Park Owners Association, they said, yeah, that would be all right, you know, on the fringe, you know, that would work okay, that would work well. So, we think we'll be able to get through that. But if, for some reason, that doesn't happen, we may have to come back on to the Planning Commission again and say, well, we need to, you know, we really need to rethink this whole Snohomish County area. But it's easy to do. It really, with the technology behind this, you know, this acquisition of planning data today, every year, we can bring information so that you make informed decisions on where that can happen. So, you're in a good position now? The city has designated good sites, and let's see what happens. I mean, obviously Canyon, Canyon, or Country Village is, you know, has got this option to consider. And pretty soon, the same option will happen in Canyon Park, and we'll see whether that's going to work.
If you may have a follow-up. So, I joined earlier this year, and Canyon Park was already slated for, you know, kind of a new focus for more density. Was there a list of four, five, seven areas, or is it just Snohomish County? I know it less, because I drive the other way. But when you get outside of 527, where else in Snohomish County is there potential for density? And were there other areas on the list within the city limits or in our growth boundaries that were second or third or fourth?
In 2015?
In 2015, well, there were some identification of where could else we put that. And we were talking about 3,500 population. That's a lot of residential units. That's 2,200 residential, 2,300, sorry, residential units. Where are you going to put that number? And that was a real challenge. And what would have probably occurred is, if not for Country Village and Canyon Park, Canyon Park in particular, well, that would have had to start going into some of our residential areas, the single-family residential areas, and some of the areas that are right next to the single-family residential, where you have a cap of like a 2,800 or a 4,000 or something like that, we would have had to start raising those up. And that would have been really a tough thing to do, because you would have had a huge impact on a lot of the, a lot of the population within the city.
But just going up 527, there are some older retail locations that take up a lot of space. And if you look at, I lived along 99 for years in Seattle, and if you go 99, there's just this march from the Aurora Bridge north of residential housing, where all the wrecking yards were and auto dealership, you know, the used car dealerships. That's, residential is now filling in because of short commutes, density. And so, I know we usually think of residential out here as single-family, but what's happening downtown, are there other areas other than Canyon Park, again, that could, you know, if encouraged, kind of redevelopment of mixed use?
Well, in fact, the RAC was assigned to some of those areas for the redevelopment. In fact, that's probably where you'll get most of your residential occurring as part of a redevelopment stage. If you want, if you look at the map, you're going to say, oh, well, where's all the green space? Basically, the blank pieces of property that are available for development. And there are a few in Canyon Park, but not that many. I mean, there's what, six in Canyon Park or something like that? And, you know, that's probably about 15 or 20 acres. That's not near enough to take care of the capacity deficit we had in the city. So, you would have had to have talked about that redevelopment. And that's basically what we're looking at, is this is going to mostly be redevelopment-type activities that occur, very similar to what you've seen along Highway 99.
I'm just wondering whether we look at just further stretching up 527 with that emphasis to see from a planning perspective. And it obviously develops as it develops, as people, property values go up, it makes sense to redevelop, because you're displacing current value.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the things that's kind of great, and Tom mentioned this about the GIS system, is that when you start pulling up the different layers on that, steep slopes, wetlands, and things like that, you start seeing areas where you have a real difficulty putting something. And the 527 Bothell Everett Highway Corridor is a real classic example. You get much passing downtown, and it's hemmed in by steep slopes on one side and wetlands on the other for quite a while, until you get about where, I can't remember what the exact cross, but just south of 220 Street, and then it starts finally to open up again. And the other thing is, we got to look at where our infrastructure is. I mean, you know, where's 405? Where's 527? Where's going to be our bus rapid transit facilities? All those things kind of come into play on this thing. So, but, you know, that's one of the things that is fun about the GIS stuff. And we have a great GIS staff. And if you go to the COB map, C-O-B map, you can really come up, pull up all kinds of really interesting information. of really interesting information on that.
Let me, let me add to that, too. Transportation and land use are integrally linked together, uh, as we know. And, um, the 527 area is, is an area that has some congestion. And it, and it probably lends itself better, under today's circumstances, to commercial. But as if, I guess, if and as, if we can, um, create, uh, if we can create, uh, less delays through that transportation network, uh, whatever way we do that, uh, by coordinating signals or developing more grid streets and arterials in relationship to 527, or, or just adding capacity, and, um, as Swift 2, uh, is extended there, those, those dynamics can change. And, and when that happens, um, I think the other, you know, the redevelopment potential is, is going to go up. And what you're asking is, is likely to happen. But, but we, those, those issues probably need to be addressed first.
I want to jump back to something you guys mentioned that's, that's highlighted in here, too, about the shortfall and, and surplus in King County and Snohomish County. Was it you, Tom, that said that, that there had been an attempt to talk to the state about allowing that to, to balance out?
PSRC.
PSRC, yes.
PSRC. Is it time to make a more concerted effort on that? Because to me, it's pretty ridiculous that there, that that line, that is an imaginary line, in reality, is, is creating this, this deficit that we don't have. It's just, it's, it's a deficit on paper. And if, if we are, um, if we're interested in preserving Country Village, everybody's got an opinion about that and, and, you know, and those sorts of things, maybe the first approach is to go to the state of PSRC again and say, look, you guys, this is, this is crazy, you know? And force the, I don't know, I have no idea what level of, uh, discussion or review took place when, the last time the city went and did that. But, um, I, I would think that that might be a good place to start. And I don't, I don't know, frankly, know if we have the time to do that right now in terms of getting this stuff all wrapped up and that kind of thing. But, you know, it sure seems to make sense to me that that would be a, an option.
Well, and I can answer the timing question.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I don't want to spill Bruce's thunder. I mean, the, the, I guess, isn't the, the next time that, uh, we seriously have to look at, uh, buildable lands and new population, uh, figures is 2022.
Yes.
But you want to be prepared for that, you know? You don't want to wait until 2022 and just, um, update your plan. So it's good, it's good to have, think ahead and, and get prepared for it. So certainly, um, it, it's an issue that you can, I think it's an issue that you can raise any time and, gains, gain some amount of, of concern or, or sympathy or whatever with, with the, uh, the challenges that, that we have. But, but, uh, as, as, and, and the new horizon for, uh, the 2022 update will be 20, 2040 or 2050?
It's already 2040, so it'll be 2050.
2050 horizon, probably. Uh, so there'll be another different projection that comes from, from that. You know, I, I, I think that it's, it's important to, um, keep, keep maybe an ongoing, an ongoing, uh, dialogue. And, you know, maybe when we, when we get information from the two counties, King and Snohomish, we should brief the Planning Commission on those, on those data sets. And we, and I, I'm most familiar with Snohomish because, because we get a pretty detailed analysis from Snohomish County every year. And we need to, we need to make sure that you, that we, um, bring that forward to the commission and have some, some dialogue on it. Uh, it's good for feedback and it, and it'll help us actually in working with Snohomish County, uh, in the future. And these are kind of informal things, not, not, um, specific, um, initiatives or resolutions that we need to do, but, but, you know, interaction. So that's one thing I'd recommend. And then the other, um, you know, and, and the other way is just, is just to keep, is just to keep an eye really on how the two counties also develop and make any changes to the countywide planning policies. Because that is, that is sort of where the legislative platform is made. And, and those, those countywide planning policies for these two counties are very different. They're just extremely different. And, you know, in some cases, it might be good to see Snohomish update theirs, uh, to, to be a little more, uh, uh, you know, accepting of, of some stronger urban growth that's not so, so suburban oriented, um, and, and develop some programs to, to support that. But that's a, you know, that's a touchy thing, and it, and it certainly is something that all county residents, uh, might have, might have an interest in.
And, and I will tell you that when that decision was made by PSRC, it was a very concerted effort on the part of the city. We had Director Waisel, we made a number of presentations, letters from our elected officials. It was a very strong, forceful effort the city put forward to have that considered. And it was determined after somebody read the, the RCW's inside each county, and it, and it did, the, apparently that interpretation was like, well, sorry, the county has to provide for that population growth. You're not providing it in the Snohomish County part, therefore you're deficient of the GMA. So it was, it was a, that was a, it was a pretty, uh, strong effort the city put forward to have that considered.
And you think, how long was that, that that was done roughly?
2000 and, 2008, I think, 2009, something like that?
Just wondering if, you know, it, I don't know what the, what the, if the county successfully convinced the city of Bothell that that was the correct approach or not. But I wonder, I mean, I wonder if it's time to look at going back to them with that. I, I don't know, it just seems like we're sitting here talking about where do we allocate growth and that kind of thing? And it's really not anything we should be obligated to do at this point because we're meeting, as a city, we're meeting our requirement. And, you know, maybe before we dive into, you know, spending a whole bunch of money on studies to see where the growth should go, maybe we should throw some money at really, at, at, looking at it again, you know? Because like you said, the city of Bothell is one of five cities in the state that has, uh, that, um, is in two counties and by far the largest of those five. To me, that should garner some, you know, there should be an exception made for that because we're, we're burdened with something that, uh, virtually every other city in the state is not burdened with, and that's dealing with two separate jurisdictions. So, I don't know, it's just my thoughts. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but.
Yeah, Walter, do we have, I mean, just kind of like, are, are there people on the commission who'd like to kind of, do you need more, more time to think about that? Or, Vice Sir Clarks, do you like that idea of, of, of the city spending time, you know, in the near future, maybe trying to revisit it? And maybe, or maybe before that, Commissioners Orange, can I have a comment before we?
It's, it just seems that if the, if the mandate is that counties have a target they're supposed to hit collectively, that Bothell's surplus has to stay within the credit of King County. And I can see a King, another King County city saying, well, Bothell's taken up our numbers over here. I mean, if, if the state is looking, if, if they're looking at each county pulling their weight, I could see an argument being made that, well, Bothell took King County's surplus and another city taking, asking for some relief.
Well, um, it's also, each jurisdiction is expected to take a certain amount of the King County or Snohomish County growth. And for the city to say, well, we've got a surplus here, we'll give some back, then another city would have to take it. And that's quite a negotiation process that would occur.
Isn't it, I mean, all, isn't the forecast of our numbers really come from OFM?
It does come from OFM.
Oh, Office of Financial Management.
That's the state, and they, yeah. And they, they have different growth targets and growth projections they make. And then it's given to PSRC, and then PRC see through their multi-county planning policies because they have four counties that PSRC looks at. Well, Pierce gets this, Snohomish County gets this, King County gets this, and Kitsap gets this. And so then that starts the whole discussion process of how that gets allocated.
Okay. Commissioner Wickwire? I, I agree that we should look into that. I, I guess I don't put a lot of faith that it's going to actually happen in a timeframe that matters. And in that same timeframe, with just what's happening in our region, uh, you know, a lot of different regions would love our growth and our job production and people moving here. You know, the whole Amazon second headquarters discussion is highlighting how much growth has happened here just for Amazon. And, and, um, the friends we have that are in the city and getting pushed out because of how expensive it is to rent and live in the city and that population, that it's coming. And we may not have a surplus in five years in King County. It may, there may be, we may be, um, if, if there are places that we can see because of our specific geography and our topography here, that are just obvious places for more growth or more density, can we do things now so that five, 10 years from now, when a redevelopment opportunity happens, that code is in place versus just more retail going in or different retail, uh, or more investments go in retail that somebody looks at that property and go, oh, I can, I can tear down this old strip mall and build all-new retail and have, you know, 1,000 units or 500 units in this same spot?
Yeah, and that's basically why we do the Conference of Plan and the Development Regulations. We have locations within the city where we've had the ability to just exactly that, tear down an old strip mall and have a residential above. It hasn't happened yet. It is occurring. And that's where, that's where it's kind of the interesting thing comes in.
But, but if we get that in our code or we make those choices now as far as incentives and where we want growth to happen, the foundation's laid. Because if we continue on this growth path as a region, property values will be, you know, it will happen, guaranteed.
Yes.
Any other Commissioners want to comment to any of what we've been discussing over like the last 10 or 15 minutes? Yeah, and just, as a little plug about, I remember when I was probably the same way along that Commissioner Wickwire was to the Planning Commission now, when I came on, I remember we were going through the rezoning and, and I still feel this way. And it's just going to be a short comment, it's just, you know, I thought that Country Village was, was truly the, the commercial gem of Bothell. As much as I like Main Street, it's incredibly unique. So it'd be, you know, I don't know what the future holds for it, but it is, it is a great place, so. And I, oh, and I also noticed, I was just doing some numbers, and as Bruce, you and I have talked about in the past, I mean, these projects, these, these are all just capacity numbers. They don't mean they're going to happen, they don't mean they're going to increase, decrease. They're just kind of to give some idea of projections. And, and just for fun, I just subtracted off Country Village, and we're still 950 in the positive, according to this graph, in Snohomish County. So I thought that was interesting. So without that rezone, we're still in the positive if we move forward, which we are. I know you're kind of heading the, uh, the Regional Growth Center in Canyon Park, which you're going to speak to later, or now.
Yeah, and, and I will say, after doing this a long time, there are times when those surpluses come in really handy. And we just talked about some of those issues, so, yeah.
Right.
There, there are times when that's a great thing to have.
Yeah. So I guess with that, we have kind of, we can try to kind of make our way through. Now, was it, was it the hopes of, um, the, you know, of community development that we would probably come to some conclusion tonight and try to pass something?
That would be, that would be great if we can do that, yeah. And then, you know, basically make sure that the, the attachment A, as revised, is basically what the commission talked about and is still consistent with what the commission would like to see there.
So, yeah, let's, what, then I guess we should do is, we should, let's just go through, if it's okay with the commission, and feel free to jump in if you have other comments. But maybe we can go through page by page, and if just, if people have any questions or changes that they see needed. I know Commissioner Wickwire stated a couple with regards to what we'll be signing later. But just go through here and just, if, if everybody likes what they see on here. I think we can get through it fairly quickly. But, so, but we'll start with the, the new one that Bruce, you gave us, because it's the, it's the update, it includes everything else plus the new step, right? Okay, makes it easier. So on page one, did, did anybody have anything that they see needed to be changed?
Now, the language that you see that's not underlined or structured is, that's existing language in the plan right now, just so we remember where we got there. So all of page one here is, that's existing language in the code, plan right now. Okay.
Okay.
So, so Bruce, what was included in the packet that we got is, the attachment A there is significantly different than the attachment A that we have.
It is, it is, yeah.
This, this attachment A is a complete copy of, the one you handed out tonight is a complete copy?
Yes.
And this was just, just had the changed areas in, is that correct?
Yes and no. Yes, from the standpoint that it, it has some of the changed areas. It didn't include some of the language that the Public Works Department provided me regarding some of the changes and some of the other things. And that's why I highlighted that in yellow, so you could take a look at that.
Okay, but any, I guess, what we were looking at in the packet was not a complete attachment A, it was abbreviated.
Yes, yes, yeah, there you go, yeah, okay.
So with regards to what you handed out earlier, okay, anything on page two that anybody sees needs to be addressed? Commissioner Zorns?
Since we've established that all of Bothell is a core city, because I know there's some differentiation, uh, and I can't remember if it was where I ran across it. There was some clarifying, clarifying language that said that, um, only the Snohomish County side was a core city. So would it be possible to say all of Bothell is a core city? Or look for where that confusion might happen as we go through this?
We can certainly do that.
Just if we can keep an eye out for where that.
Oh, yeah, right there.
Did you find it?
Oh, you know, I may have misspoken, uh, because when I've looked, I just recently was reading through the, uh, vision, yeah, vision, it's on page number four. And it's one, two, three, and it's about six lines down from, in the third paragraph. This actually does identify as a core city in Stone County, but does not have a core city within King County. And I was just going through Vision 2040, and it identified Bothell as a core city. So, um, I'm willing to take a look at that and make the correction as necessary, or no correction if none, one is, if this is correct.
Okay.
All right, all right.
All right, thanks.
Wow, good catch on that. That's, uh, that's pretty significant. I don't know. So that was new language, that, that paragraph, that little, was that new language from what we had earlier?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess the, am I doing this the best way, Bruce, do you think, to go through this, to review it? I mean, am I catching pretty much everything going through this way?
I think so.
With the new materials?
Identify if there's another, I mean, the pages that people are mostly interested in looking at.
Okay. Is there anything on page two that, anything additional with regards to?
Bruce, is it within our charter here to, to make changes, review and make changes to the parts of the plan that did not change?
The initiate, the initiating language was to craft amendments to implement the PSRC comments. It wasn't to make other changes, so.
Well, I guess the question would be, if there are pages that don't have any underlines or highlights, maybe we don't need to look at them, is that?
But I'm willing to look and see if there's a, something that is in error.
Yeah.
I'm, that's certainly a perfectly good area to make a change to. So I, I am, I'm quite comfortable linking a look at that.
Typo or grammatical error or something like that?
Yep, there you go, yep.
Okay. Why don't we look at those pages?
Any, any grammatical on two or, okay, let's go on to page three then. Looks like there's not changes. Do you have something on that page three?
Just minor stuff I can hand you after the meeting.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just looks like it's like.
Missing periods and things like that.
Oh, I see a couple of places, yeah, I found a couple of them.
You know, employment targets, that first sentence, I think, in the, is missing a sentence or a period after targets.
It is.
You know.
Okay, great. You can just get together with Bruce later with that. And page four. Thanks for bringing to our attention that very important, different string counties on core cities, just a little comment.
And my proposal would be to report back to the chair as to what we determined and then he can verify that they're good, so.
Okay. Okay, is anybody else?
Just a question on, on Country Village again. So the back area where they're developing, is that not part of Country Village technically? Because it's residential, right?
Well, there's Country Village, the shops.
Yes.
And there's Country Village, the property.
Yeah.
And so the property has always gone further to the west than the shops.
Yes.
So, I mean, you could say, well, it's, it's, it's behind Country Village, the shops, but it's on the Country Village property.
I just, just reading here that the Country Village development is designated CB exclusively. And where that train for kids used to be, isn't that residential that's being developed back there? I just don't.
The entire, in 2015, the entire area was identified, was, and a residential component was applied to the entire area.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just, four, four lines up from the bottom on page four. Is it true that the Country Village development is, is that meaning the shops is designated CB exclusively?
Yeah, and here's what's happened, what you're looking at, you're looking at the plan as it existed just before the periodic amendment. So when this language was written, it was, but after the periodic amendment was passed, it wasn't, if you so say. You know, I think that's a good thing to just pull out of there.
Okay.
Because, you know, you're right, it, it, okay, well, it's, and it's confusing because you're putting it into the context of the time, but it doesn't do anybody any good to look at that now.
I'm okay with removing that if everybody else is. It seems reasonable.
Just one, the last line on page four, Red Barn Village, that's just not, is that, is that village, is that a name in the code? I don't remember that.
It is.
Okay. I know it's the Red Barn Special District. Okay.
Yeah, there actually is some language in there about Red Barn Village.
Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead to page five then. It's just a table.
Yeah.
Obviously the highlighting, this is what.
Yeah, and just the label, what's the table is about, yep, there you go.
Yep. And on page six.
And that would be where the new table would be inserted. The total population and employment targets and capacities after the 2015 periodic plan and code amendment. That was the thing that I think was missing that was really leading us all to say, well, we're talking about past tense things. This, this basically brings us, brings us up to date.
Okay. If anybody else has any comments on this page, go ahead and speak up.
Is human service provider a term of art in the lingo here?
It actually is, yes. What the city does is they contract with human service providers and so.
Okay.
Bruce, what's included on TR 13 and TR 14? It's based on the financial information in table TR 13 and TR 14, it shows our funded projects and unfunded.
Yeah, that's the funding provisions and it's a pretty, it's a couple of really long tables. And, and it identifies projects and, and costs associated with those projects. And let's see, what else does it do? I don't remember everything that's in there, but that's basically what those two tables do.
So is that all of the identified projects in the city? Like, would it be like the CIP or something different than that?
Well, it, it goes beyond the CIP. Basically what it is, is for the 2035 plan, those are the projects that have been identified that are, would be necessary to implement the land use actions that are being taken with the 2035 plan. And so it's got a lost, long list of things, some of them are already being built actually, but, but it has a really long list of things. I can go get it if you really want.
No, that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I can tell you that this language was particularly interesting from the PSRC staff. They really wanted something that said there might be a gap in funding. And that was their, that was their primary direction to us. And so as a result, that's where this language in the yellow came from, was their, their discussions we, they had with the Sherman.
Where is the streets and sidewalks portion and is it part of this, these bullet points?
It, it is a little bit. What this is, this is more of a broader discussion about, okay, yeah, we, those are the types of activities or, or actions the city could take, levy, that would potentially be necessary to fill up the gap we have, if you would.
It, I don't know, not to add on to it, but it seems, maybe, it seems like it would be cool, it'd be interesting to call that out in here, it's, because we are, we did approve it, and so we are funding it, right? So I don't know.
We are.
So I don't know.
Yes. Well, I, I think what I can do is.
Because these are all like action items to happen and it'd be kind of nice to, if we're sending this to them, to say, hey, look, just so you know, we're the only city in the state to pass something like this, right? If I recall, I think it was the only one that passed.
Yeah, we, we had a conversation with Mr. Hubner about that when we had him up here.
Okay, you've already had, I assume you did.
And it was like, well, yeah, but that's just, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So we, we, we said, yes, sir, whatever you want, sir. Not quite that bad.
All right, page eight.
And the last thing there, of course, is the action that would basically implement the multimodal concurrency. Basically the idea is that within your plan, you want to have a supporting action before you make a code amendment like this of that nature. And this provides that support.
Okay. So, and just, so how does that work? Just going for, examine it. So does this, we usually put it in there and it, is it, does it actually get, does it get a lot of time spent by staff? I mean.
Well, what hap.
Or just it's in the line of things to do?
Right. Well. And what it is, is basically the concept is that our comprehensive plan is the policy and action document. The implementing regulations must be consistent with that comprehensive plan. So you get into real trouble if you have a development regulation that's not reflected within your comprehensive plan. That's, that's kind of a no-no anymore underneath the Growth Management Act. So what we want to make sure is that if we are going to have that type of initiative, we definitely have language in the comprehensive plan that supports that.
Any commissioners have any additional comments on anything in here?
Okay.
With that, and then, you know, we had an additional table, I don't know if we need to go through it, but that Bruce provided, probably not unless somebody else thinks we need to. Has anybody had any questions with regards to the table that was in the, the packet that was printed out previously before tonight? Oh, yeah, it got clarified later. The only questions I had got clarified by your providing the additional information tonight.
Okay.
All right. I feel like we've got enough commissioners here tonight and we've gone through enough meetings to go ahead and have a resolution to this, so.
Yeah, I think maybe the first step would be to close the public hearing.
Yeah. Kind of have a motion to. Close the public hearing, yes.
Motion to close the public hearing on the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Amendments requested by the Pugilist County Regional Council.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed with that. Are there now any comments from the commissioners now that the public hearing is closed before we go ahead and? Not seeing, not seeing anything. So I guess, we already did have, I mean, we did have quite a good discussion earlier with regards to things within here, so I think you kind of got a good idea of questions we had and appreciate the comments with regards to Country Village and Vice Chair Clark's comments with regards to, while it might be a long shot, it would be nice if, you know, the city, it was easier for the city to, you know, kind of combine those growth targets over time. And I know you guys will try if you can, you know, throughout time, so.
I think at this point then a motion to recommend this to the council and.
Yeah, I'm trying to look for the exact language.
Oh, I had it in one of my memos. I don't know if I gave it to you, this memo though.
Yeah, there we go. I'm trying, it was, yep.
Right before attachment.
Sorry about that. So, yeah, there we go. Okay, now, yeah, okay. Okay. So I guess based upon these findings and conclusions, the Planning Commission recommends the City Council adopt plan amendments consistent with attachment A to these findings.
And the chair would request that because the chair can't make a motion, of course, so.
Somebody make that.
Do, do we need to say something in that recommendation about as amended by?
Yes, as amended, as amended to discussions tonight, yes.
Okay.
Anybody else want to give it a shot?
I move to recommend the Planning Commission findings and conclusions and recommendations for the PSRC plan amendments to the Bothell Comprehensive Code to the City Council as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Passes?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
You bet.
Thanks, Tom. No studies session, old business.
None here.
I know you have a report tonight.
Yeah, we have a couple of reports. When we wanted to just kind of introduce the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center update that we're working on. We kind of had a little discussion about that previously. However, this is an action that we're really gearing up on right now. We've gotten a webpage set up, we're going to have some stakeholder meetings, and we're going to have an open house that'll be open to everybody. It'll be in October, probably the 26th. We're still working on a couple of the locations. We haven't firmed it up exactly, but probably 20, October 26th would be the firm date. One of the things that'll be really interesting here is we're going to create a customized comment tool where people from all over the place can go into the webpage and actually make comments and give us sort of their ideas of what they'd like to do. And I think maybe I'll kind of preface this, this is a vision document we're going to create for this year. And that's basically, okay, what would you like to see out here? And it runs the gamut of things from mixed use to more retail to more residential, all those kind of things, and as well as some of the issues we got. You know, we know we have transportation issues, we know we have some, some open space issues, parks issues and things of that nature. So it's going to be a really fun tool. I'm really looking forward to seeing what the results are for that. Now, of course, what will happen is this will be the vision document that we'll create for this year. Next year, what we'll do is we'll really involve the Planning Commission because that'll be the plan and code formation process. And that'll be, probably be pretty intense. We're going to have a, we'll certainly have a consultant on board who will help us go through that. And it's going to be made, pretty similar to what happened with the downtown plan, but it'll, it's a different focus because it's certainly a, a different area that is very, very strong in employment. In fact, one of the really fun facts that we've learned is that there's 9,000 employees just within the Regional Growth Center, 4,000 of which are involved in direct manufacturing, either biomedical devices or bio, biomedical research. So it's really amazing how many people are actually out there. And we've been doing this little kind of tour and driving around and it's just amazing when you look at the names on the buildings, it's, you know, you've got people from Lockheed Martin to CMC, which is basically doing a lot of, a lot of research in biomedical stuff. So we have a really amazing opportunity here to do something really that could help those companies hopefully, as well as get some of our residential going out there. So it's, it's, it's going to be a really fun process, you know, stay tuned. We're going to have a lot of things happening here in the next couple of months.
And commissioners are invited to.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes, yeah, but the open house.
October 26th, 20.
Can we, can we all show, I mean, how's that work, you know?
OPA, yeah.
Make sure you do it in shifts.
Just out of curiosity, could you just advertise it as a public meeting or is that not appropriate?
It's more of an open house because at a public meeting, there's an expectation there's going to be an action taken or some type of business conducted. And this is just going to be a pure open house where we get information from people, we give them information and, and so I don't know if we could advertise an open, but we do have the ability to place an advertisement that says there may be a quorum of the commission or the council at this time.
I think that's what I was suggesting.
No business will be conducted. We have that ability, I believe, so I can check into that for you.
Because, I mean, I think it might be interesting to attend that, so, and I assume like, everybody up here is kind of like, yeah, I'd like to attend that.
What's the date again?
That would be the 26th of October.
Thursday.
Yes, it's a Thursday.
From which time?
Like what time? Is it usually kind of in the afternoon?
It'll probably be, well, actually, we're going to try and do this in the evening.
On the evening, that's right.
Six to eight.
Six to eight on the 26th?
Yes. That's, that's the time we'd like to do it, and I think that's a good time to do it because that gives people a chance to get home and, and, you know, if they want to eat first, they can come, or if they want to eat later, they can come.
I mean, it's not, it's not a meeting where there's a presentation and a formal, a formal method of surveying and taking information. I think it's more of a open house workshop where you can come and go, you know, if you can, if you can spend 15, 20 minutes there and visit the different sites and participate and fill out a form, that's good.
Okay. Commissioner Horne's.
I, I'm assuming this will be out on social media because there's, people are really getting engaged, looking on the Bothell Community page and City of Bothell.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we're really heavily involving our public information officer.
Okay.
Okay. So I don't know if we need to advertise that or not, or if we can, you know, maybe the commissioners. So, I don't know if we need to advertise that or not, or if we can, maybe the commissioners can just stop in for a few minutes, or?
I'll check into it. I'll listen to what we decide to do there.
Okay.
And then, the next staff report is on the University of Washington Cascade College Master Plan. I'm going to let Tom do that one.
Thanks, Bruce. Yeah, the schedule for the adoption, I guess, of the campus master plan is set. We're, we're bringing a presentation to the City Council on October 3rd. The plan has been out since July 31st on their website. And we can send you a link to that if you'd like to have that. I'm sure some of you may have already looked at it. And it, and it contains several component pieces. It's a change to the comprehensive plan and very slight language change to recognize, to recognize, well, recognize a, kind of a movement of, of campus buildings towards the Beardsley Boulevard area to kind of have more of an urban setting there. Walkable urban setting. We felt that that was something that needed to be referenced in the comprehensive plan. I think it's only two line changes to it. Then there's a component piece with, with the update of, of the 1264 108 in the subarea plan for the downtown and a small section out of Title 11 of the code to, to work on process. All of those interrelate together. And the plan unit development is going to be superseded by, by the downtown subarea campus, campus district designation. And the conditions of approval of the original PUD will be carried for, carried forward in a development agreement. So, a presentation on the 3rd and coming back to the City Council for a public hearing on October 17th. That's essentially it. I will add, I think that the campus has had an extensive neighborhood participation element to this throughout, throughout this summer and springtime, which I, which I think has been extremely beneficial to the community overall and also to the neighborhoods that are adjacent to the campus. And they listened to the neighbors, which is always a good thing. And they, you know, the campus master plan has been, has been designed around those, that input. Kind of the more, more interesting things, you know, to me, anyway, the, the dormitories have been moved further to the east, not on the west side, further to the east. And there may be some along Beardsley at some point, but the first dormitories will, will be on the east side of the campus by where the rec facility is. And the other, the other kind of interesting part is they've, they've anticipated adding more square footage to the campus, but keep, maintaining the target size for full-time equivalent students so that they can reach parity with, with the other campuses on ratio of student, space per student on campus. I think that, that, the, the changes with redevelopment of the Husky Hall area will, will be beneficial to the, to the community and the downtown, the way that's been proposed. And there are some ancillary commercial uses that could go along with that. Relocation of the bookstore and relocation of some of the existing, of the existing restaurant and maybe adding a restaurant. So, it's a creative plan. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's had a good, a good design team behind it and it's very comprehensive. I mean, that's just my, that's my two-sentence take on it.
Okay. Thanks for that, Tom.
My apologies. The last item is just to verify that the commission is working on getting their email addresses through the city set up. And if you haven't yet, you know, let us know. And if you're having issues, please use IT staff. They're great. They'll, they'll work really hard with you to make sure you're, you're good and ready to go. Because eventually, we'd like to use that email address exclusively. I'm not looking at any particular commission members right now, but, but yeah, we'd like to go to that, use that and get rid of the old ones you all set up. So, that's it for staff reports.
I have one question. Would you mind sending that IT information, the contact to our other email addresses?
I could do that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem at all.
And actually, Bruce, I knew you just wrapped it up, but I had a part D. Before the meeting, you had told me something very interesting with, I don't know, I mean, with regards to clustering. I thought that was something kind of cool to bring forth towards the commission because it's kind of a cool, cool thing that happened that I didn't even know about until tonight.
We've had a couple of pre-application conferences coming in that are going to use the clustering application process.
So, that's really great. So, congratulations to the commission for going through all those meetings. Just, you said one of the potential applications sets aside half of the property.
It's about half the site is.
Almost half the property.
Yeah. We looked at that and said, wow.
That's great.
Great.
Like, old trees are being preserved or, I mean?
Yeah, the trees and vegetation and, I mean, I mean, instead of having yards and houses, you're going to have open space.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's great.
So, that's, that was neat. Thanks for bringing that forward, Bruce. Any reports from members?
I actually just have one thing to bring up and it's really just a future, you know, whether it's something that needs to be addressed in the code or refined. There's a new housing development up on West Hill and in putting the sidewalk in for that new housing development, there's wetlands right there and they jogged the sidewalk close to 88th and then they jogged it back away from 88th because of safe streets to have that, you know. But it turned out that this massive tree that's been there for a long time that, that borders the wetland was taken down. And, and the question, and a lot of people in the area were, you know, were concerned about that. And I just had a couple of questions for staff. And at the end of the day, the answer was, we did it according to the code and I don't doubt that. But in this tree preservation, if there's, you know, the sidewalk itself jogged away because of the wetland and it's bordering the street, my question was, could it have been that the sidewalk could have jogged back to the street to save, you know, this massive tree that I wasn't sure was counted in the diameter inches in the original plan? If it was, I'd have to investigate the file. But there's the strict code and then the way that it gets interpreted, that's the question. And if, you know, with our tree retention policy and these other things we've put in place, it really comes down to on-the-ground decisions, like, oh, we need to take this out, you know? Is there a creative way within that? How do we instill that if that's a goal of, of the city in? So, it's just something that, that came up from the last, you know, from me in the last meeting. It's something that happened on West Hill. And it's just based upon the discussions we had about tree retention and open spaces and those things.
Now, I can say that sometimes, somebody said, well, if you just move the sidewalk over a few feet and go right next to the tree, you could save it. And sometimes that, I mean, the tree gets damaged by the very act of putting in the sidewalk, so.
Yeah.
You know, you'd have to look at the particulars of the situation. It could have been that, well, even if we did jog the sidewalk over, the tree's going to die because it's going to be in the root zone and all that kind of stuff. But I, I'm not familiar with the situation.
Yeah, I was in on the email exchanges on most of those and Gary Hassler responded. And I think you're right, David, it was a situation whether, where the tree was going to be impacted by the sidewalk, whether it was attached or detached from the curb was what I read. But I, you know, and then there was a question I got from one other resident about legacy trees. And I don't know if we have.
Right now, the city does not have a legacy tree program.
Legacy tree ordinance, yeah. So, so if, if it is, you know, I, I don't, and the other part of that one, I'm not sure that that was, I, it probably wasn't identified when it went through the permitting process as being removed. We're not, you know, I'm not sure whether or not it conceivably could have been. But, but had it been, could it, have it been identified? You can always ask the applicant and developer, do you want to provide additional right-of-way easement and go around the tree? They may not do that. And we probably don't have a mechanism to force that. We can only recommend at that point. But, you know, I, the City Council still has yet to act on tree retention.
Right.
That may, you know, that may come back to the commission. I don't know, I don't know. We've got it, we've got it kind of, we've got it on the docket. So, council is, it's going to come back up to them and be prioritized. Given, you know, given that it is a sensitive issue with a lot of Bothell residents, maybe it is best to come back and, and have the Planning Commission take another, another review of it.
In this particular situation, I don't remember the exact measurements because it wasn't the side of the street you walked on, but it, you know, on that side of the street, you had an open, the open ditch, you know, as the drainage. And so, the tree was away from the street. It came down to an open ditch. And my recollection is there would be plenty of room because the tree roots weren't there anyways because you had an open ditch.
Yeah.
And all it would have meant is filling in that open ditch another 10, 15 feet because it's right, I think it was right near the property corner and bringing the sidewalk back. Because you wouldn't be, you'd be putting sidewalk where there was nothing. And again, I think they, I know they filed the code, they filed the code because it was in the right-of-way of where the sidewalk ended up. But it's just, again, the measurements, I'd have to go in the file where it was on the survey. And I may do that just because, you know, somebody that's lived on our block, he's in his late 30s. He said that tree's always been there and it was big when he was a kid. And it's just those, and I know that trees go down when you develop, but this one, it came down at the very end. And it just, you know, after the, it had been, you know, completely developed, the road was in and the sidewalk was the last thing that was done before they started building the houses. And so, I was like, huh, why did that come down now? That just raised questions about whether it was shown as, you know, staying in on the regular plan, you know, in the plan and then somehow. So, that was the question that came up going forward. What does staff do to kind of be creative to balance safe, the safe sidewalk, safe sidewalk policy with saving if, if we were to call this a legacy tree or designated as one? That's the balancing act.
Yeah, yeah, it always is. And, and well, I, you know, well, I think the recommendation that our staff would give would be to err on the side of safety for children going to school. And that's why there is a safe sidewalk requirement in our, in our regulations. And this, you know, that was, that was the driving factor connected with this subdivision, but.
You know, I understand that. And there is a wetland there and so, but the wetland policy trumped safe sidewalk because for the first half of that sidewalk run, it's along the street. It just jogs away from the street once you start getting away from the wetland. That, that was the point.
Yeah.
So, it's already for 80 feet or 90 feet or whatever it is, it's right next, it's, it's on the curb.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm not trying to like, I know, it's just, it's a, how are we going to do this going forward? Because we can pass these regulations up here, but then they can be circumvented, not intentionally, but just the way that you're developing, just in doing a project, oh, it makes sense to take it down.
Right.
And we're, and the person would have to like plant new, to new tree, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Where this is, this is like, it's, I don't know if it's a 40-inch, 50-inch diameter tree. It's big.
Yeah, it looked big on the photos. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, let's give some more thought to that. I don't know what I would recommend in terms of added, added language to address it right now. I mean, it, if it's a, you know, I think Bruce is probably the best, the best person to look at it in terms of tree retention because he worked so hard on that code. In terms of, in terms of public works and right-of-way development, generally speaking, they, you know, they, they view it, it's viewed as moving the obstructions away and putting in new. But, but if, if they are certain historical legacy trees, I've seen some cities figure out a way to design the infrastructure around them, but they're fairly unique.
Doesn't, doesn't the recommended tree retention ordinance that's currently in front of the council have some language about giving the director discretion to do that? I thought, or was that the clustering ordinance that I'm thinking of?
Well, the initial tree retention provision did have a little bit more flexibility on the part of the director to make the determination of which trees should be saved and which should not. It wasn't, you know, it, basically, it was somewhat limiting because it didn't say, well, you could require 50% of the trees to be saved, but it did have some, some more discretion in there. And that was one of the items, I think, that we identified when we looked at this was that the initial, the existing regulations didn't have that much authority to the director except for some areas.
I thought that was a flexibility to allow a road to go somewhere where it wouldn't otherwise because a tree was there. I thought it was to, to, flexibility to remove trees, not keep trees.
Oh.
I thought that, that was the, that was the provision and that we put in there because we didn't want this to be so inflexible that.
I thought it was worded that it allowed for both.
Yeah, and actually, and actually, it was. It was, there was some flexibility added, okay, if you had to move some, you know, do something over here and just to, to address some kind of another need because, you know, basically, there are some certain road standards we have to follow. But the other idea is that there was some language about, so even different trees on the site, if you deem they had some other type of, you know, the feathered edge and some of those other, you know, surface water amenities and those things like that. So, there are kind of both of those things in there. And it was one of those, one of those code things you write, okay, give the staff the authority to look at that like you've been identifying, and then wait, let's, let's look at this particular tree here. Maybe there's a way we can save it if we do these actions. And so, that was kind of the intent of that, that some of those regulations in there.
Okay.
Can I, I have a, not really a report, but a question. I noticed there's a schedule for October in, in our packet for Planning Commission, but nothing for the remainder of September. Is there not another meeting?
There's nothing else in September.
Okay. And so far, only one meeting in October.
One meeting in October, yes. And I, and I guess I can refer to it a little bit. Right now, what you have, you have, your, your planning staff is involved with a couple of really key things that are kind of going on that are kind of keeping us from, keeping the Planning Commission busy. And Tom had a report about it and actually, there was two reports, Canyon Park and, of course, the University of Washington Cascade College Master Plan stuff.
Those, those two projects alone have been keeping us busy throughout the summer.
Yes.
And, you know, Dave Boyd has, has logged a huge amount, number of hours to the campus. And, you know, he's brought it a long way. And, and I think, I think the, you know, the status of it and its, its ability to communicate a future vision for the campus is, is well-defined, but it did take a lot of, it did take a lot of hours to get there. So, same thing with Canyon Park. I mean, we, you know, we're gearing up for these. I mean, we, you know, we're gearing up for these, this open house as well as stakeholder meetings with property owners and business owners and, and it's kind of a unique situation because there are private roads. It's, it's a successful area, it has 10,000 jobs and, and they, and they've kept their covenants intact and so it, it's going to present some different problems for us as we move into implementation. And different strategies, like, like the downtown area had, had some public-private partnerships. Canyon Park is going to have public, public-private partnerships as well, but they're going to be different than downtown. Can Canyon, you know, one of them, can Canyon Park increase internal circulation within their, within their business park by, by making some, some improvements to their transportation That's in their control. Can, you know, can we as a city and a region work externally to develop a network of feeder roads that, that come in and out of Canyon Park? And, and can we provide better transit facilities that, that better serve the park? So there's a lot of those things that, that are in play that, that our staff gets involved in and we've, we have preliminary discussions with sound transit, PSRC, community transit. All, all of that kind of legwork going into that project has been going on all of us, all over the summer. So not, you know, you know, not to say we, we don't have things waiting in the wings. We certainly do have some to work on and bring to the commission. And, and there's some pretty exciting things that are, that are going to come up. And, and some of that is going to be related to Canyon Park, some of it not. Some of it'll, some of it will be citywide things that we need to bring forward. So I'm hoping that there's another, another, you know, we can have another workshop on the docket and we can put some hours to it and figure out how to prioritize going forward for some additional projects here. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks Tom.
And just one little last note to David Wickwire's comment. I'm glad you brought that up because it was just coincidental. It's pretty heart wrenching today, like about two blocks from me in Lower Maywood. There's a beautiful home there, it was taken down a few days. And the person planted historically the, the best that you could possibly plant trees on a property and they probably took down like an 80-year-old blue atlas today. And it, and it would be great if the city had like a heritage tree program and/or, I look forward to maybe doing something in the code with regards to sidewalks because for development, I mean, they're, they're creating six residential units now, but it just seems to me that it could have worked out some kind of circle drive there. I mean, it was, it was planted perfectly and it stayed there. They took everything else down and then I thought, no, maybe some of the stuff was going to stay, but they took everything. So, because I know it was below the limit of tree retention. Anyway, they just, on top of that, I do hope we can address that in the future, so. Any other comments for any other members? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.